Let's stand for the pledge. You do that flag or that flag, whichever flag you choose. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. This meeting is a meeting of the Rochelle School Board in public for the purpose of conducting school district business and is not intended to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for a public community comment as indicated on the agenda. Notice of the public meeting was given as required by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight eighty-four, one through four, by being posted at the Community First Bank, Rochelle Public Library, Rochelle Post Office, Rochelle District Office, Rochelle School Website, and with WDUX, WSPT, and WSAW. Consider approval of agenda additions and revisions.
Can we move the discussing of the time?
For school board?
Yes, the meeting dates.
The meeting dates till after this?
Great point, and I thought about that after I sent this out that we should probably do that because if we have the interview and the new member is appointed and present, then we can get their input. So I would, I would agree with that to move the meeting date and review of next year's, the annual meeting date and review of next year's meeting dates to after the selection of the development of a new board member.
I make that motion.
It's item F.
It'll be item I on eleven of new business. Oh, no, maybe not.
Okay, so we're after.
Moves down after.
Close session or after what?
Yes, after H.
After H?
F goes after H, so discussion of possible decision of the twenty-five or twenty-six meetings and annual meeting date will go after the discussion of possible decision of board.
Okay, so after, okay, got it.
Yes, it'll be board interviews, it'll be discussion of meeting times and annual meeting date, and then discussion of board vice president.
Okay.
To fill that position.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so a motion has been made with the adjust, oh, I did.
Yes, I make a motion.
Okay, Matt makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second him.
Okay, Crystal's second, and a motion has been made to approve the agenda with revisions of having letter F moved to after letter H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Do we have any public comment, people? Can you look Mary behind you, right there?
They did not sign up, and they're giving me the nod.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just mosey on down. Okay, communication, district administrative report.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to July. Hello, everyone out there. First, I just wanted to have updates on the gym. You may or may not have noticed, we put out a message today that starting next week, we'll have our access to the after-school or evening times, the weight room and cardio room closed because we've had some individuals that are not respecting the closed gym signage and have gone into the middle or Trebekowski Memorial Gym, even though it's been blocked off and you've had caution tape saying, please do not enter, probably because they started in the west gym with the sanding of the floor. The middle's gym had not been touched yet, so they started that today. So maybe those same people look at it today and say, oh, they're sanding it, I shouldn't go in there. But my fear is that once we have the finish on the floors, it's going to look like it's ready to go, but it has to cure for a week. And so depending humidity and that type of thing, I just want to make sure we keep people off there. So any community access for the evening hours will be, they won't be able to get in the door by the weight room. The morning hours should still be fine because we have our custodian staff is present.
There, I got a claim up there.
Yeah.
The morning hours are from four to eight. That's the only time that they can go into the, to the weight room is from four to eight.
Except, I did answer several questions on Facebook that they will, it will be open for the training sessions.
If it's part of our program, yes.
For that, for the Monday, Wednesday, Thursday program that's done with.
Okay, you might want to check with Tom because that's not what I was told just recently, like, well, five o'clock, so.
Check within tomorrow. We'll clarify tomorrow.
He was going to also talk to Luke about that because that's all part of.
The training program? Training, because we didn't just know said it all today.
So, just clarify it because that was also on Facebook and it, and the thing was said four to eight, but.
Yeah, and then I went on and I answered the question that the training sessions would still, the last training session ends at nine thirty.
Just, just check with Tom to be sure that that's okay. But that's what I was, that's what I was told, so.
Well, otherwise, we're going to have to figure out what we need to do to reimburse the people who paid for those training sessions. They have like.
Depending whether that can.
One week plus, I think.
Somebody agility can be.
Yeah, check, check with Tom, it's probably going to be okay, but because they paid already, but.
But do those training sessions, there, there's no supervision too. This is when we have after-school hours or from that three-thirty, forty in the afternoon, people come in. Most of the staff has gone home for the day. There's no oversight, there's no supervision. So some of our recent grabs have come in and utilized jumps. That's the main point in time. My concern's not during the day with supervised training program. It's not in the morning because we don't have those same problems in the morning. But we'll clarify our message on Facebook and we'll clarify with our staff.
Just, and I, it maybe he wasn't even thinking about the training, so. But that's what I was told, it was just forty. But thanks, we'll check into that, Mary, but I'm.
Yeah, I'll send him a text now to remind me to talk to him tomorrow.
Okay. All right, otherwise, I can call you in the morning. I like calling people. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dennis.
I just have a couple pictures, so this is the west gym. This is when they were sanding, and this is pretty much where the entire gym floor has been sanded down, so you can see there's no lines or anything. Not a great picture, but it's pretty light in color compared to what it was. I also have another picture that is showing kind of a comparison with the floor and what it used to be along the edges. So you can see how much darker that is, comparisons of the bare wood. Now, obviously, once they have the court lines and we have the pickleball lines and we have the volleyball court and everything else, and all those lines are down, there will be two coats of water-based finish that goes over that, but the water base is much clearer than the oil base. So that way, after twenty years, it's, it's going to get darker as time goes on and every year, but initially, it's going to be pretty light. So that's probably going to be a surprise for a lot of our A R, our players and coaches, and B, our fans when they come in for that first volleyball game. They're like, oh, my gosh, I need sunglasses, so. It'll be pretty interesting. I'm also interested to see what it looks like in the middle gym now, the Trebekowski Memorial Gym, because we've kind of done a rebrand and a recoat of the paint to make it look a little bit more modern and get rid of that kind of pastel yellow to match kind of the, the rest of the school. And so that's also going to be very light in there because the finish on there is, I mean, this was, in the, in the west gym, this was twenty-seven years in the baking, and normally, it's fifteen-ish that you resurface it. Well, I don't, I don't know the last time that the, the middle school or the, the middle gym was touched. So it's probably, I'm guessing it's more than twenty-seven, right? And this was ninety-eight, so, and I know that it was the last time, this was the original floor because multiple companies that came in to bid this project said, we think this is the original floor. Like, how can you tell? They said, well, these lines are here at the closest to the basketball hoop. They went out in two thousand and one, so if this was a ninety-eight, there's no way people redid it for years. This is the original floor. So this is the first time that we've taken it right down to the barrel wood. So that's a gym update. Just wanted to inform the board, and I will ask that the board approve the administrators' report because the Fast Forward Technical Education Equipment Grant, we did receive that grant. It's a one-third, two-third type of thing. So the grant was for, even though it's for those like, something like fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, the grant is fifty-eight hundred, but then we have to provide the other two-thirds of that. But it's something that Chad's been trying to do for a few years now. We have applied for different grants, we haven't been awarded them. And this was interesting because we submitted and they're like, wait a second, your, your totals are off by like twelve dollars. Then we adjusted it to make it twelve dollars, and then they're like, oh, wait a second, now you're out of range with, you know, the percentage that could be for, you know, labor and for equipment. And we're like, okay, so we adjust again, they're like, okay, that looks good now. And I'm like, when have they ever had that level of scrutiny before? So I kind of was like, oh, maybe I'm hopeful, maybe they're reviewing this, maybe we're going to get this. So we did receive that, that equipment grant, and there's like a forty-one page explanation of the grant if you want to go through that. Staffing updates, just wanted to inform the board that we, as far as teacher positions, we are looking still for a biology teacher, a Spanish teacher, and a, now a business ed teacher. We had a resignation in business ed this week. We have a lead on Spanish, so I'm, we're going to discuss that in closed session. I'm going to ask Mary Klein to stay because she had a conversation with our potential candidate last night to share that with the board. We, we have, we have a couple of different strategies with biology, and I want to talk to the board about individual contracts that close as well. But I started making cold calls yesterday, the day before, and I did a weekend search for anybody that's certified in Broadfield Association of Biology specifically, and if they've updated their materials on the weekend system, which is kind of the educator system, if they've updated that within the last ninety days, and if they had a seven-one-five area code, or if they went to school at Stevens Point, or if they had a paper address or any, and so I called probably a third of the, there was like five pages of candidates, and I don't know how many are per page, twenty, twenty-five, whatever it might be. I called probably a third of them, sent some emails to individuals, and I have three people that have responded that are interested. One of them actually has applied for the decision. So I'm pretty encouraged that we're going to be able to find somebody. But again, I want to talk a little bit more strategy at a later time. District office this morning, the reason that we're meeting in the, in the library, thank you to everybody that worked on that, to Tom, to Tricia, to all of our summer crew, Bobby and Carol and Debbie. Jeff was in there, Tom was in there. But here's a couple of short little videos that we're taking this morning. I just want to play them quick if I'm going to be able to because it shows kind of the water that was there. Again, it's just walking, but you can see the splish splash. So that's Natalie walking from room thirty-two into the district office. And we'll just take a look at that one more time if it's going to load now. Come on. And you just see the feet, there's this splish splash on there, right? So then, another one that was them cleaning up, and this shows the actual district, district office by Tricia's desk. And you can see the, the water line there and the tiles that have fallen down from the ceiling and, and just trying to get that all cleaned out. So unfortunately, we, as Tom said, he goes, unfortunately, we found out that coils freeze in the summertime too, which is unfortunate. But there must have been a fan that had stopped working, and then, you know, all of us left the district office yesterday and, and didn't turn it to unoccupied and just totally split my mind even thinking about that. And then, I think Tricia said Morgan this morning came in at seven and noticed it right away, ran and got Jeff, and, and so they were able to, to take care of it right away as, as quick as possible. And I was at physical therapy this morning, but Tricia said it was all hands on deck. Like, we had like fourteen people working in that office, trying to get furniture out of the way and get the water soaked up. So we'll see how that works, but that's the reason we're here. So a little bit of a surprise this morning, which is unfortunate for us. Just an update on referendum committee, we posted that. I've had two committee members sign up for referendum committee. Again, I'm going to start making some cold calls, so if the board has people that they think would be either an absolute no vote that would be on the committee that could, again, the committee is designed not to, not to persuade people to vote yes, but to brainstorm like, what types of information do people need to make a wise decision? How does that information get put out to the public? What's the timing of that information? So it's not necessarily a vote yes committee, but it is a committee that is going to, to talk about what information does our community need to make that decision? So if you know of people that would serve on that committee or you think would be a good committee member for that purpose, by all means, let me know their, their names. You can reach out and say, hey, by the way, Dennis is going to be calling you, and then I'll call it. Our first meeting is going to, we're going to try to have that middle of August.
Can you shout the each knowledge?
Absolutely. Good idea.
Just say, hey, you know, announce that your meetings, if anybody wants to be a part of this. Can you please let us know?
Absolutely.
It's because you're singing next to me.
That concludes my report, pending any questions.
Okay. I think, okay. Well, why did we, you want to list to approve your administrative?
But I would ask that because of the grant and the dollar amount, because it's a one to two thirds, so we're going to contribute a little over eleven thousand dollars to that project.
Okay.
Pending board approval, that's the dollar amount that I would ask that the board make a motion and a second to approve the administrative report to include the grant, to accept the grant.
So I need a motion to approve the district administrative report regarding the grant and everything that. So, Ross.
I'll make a motion and present it.
Okay, Angela, and do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Matt, a second. The motion was made and seconded to approve the district administrative report regarding gym update, Wisconsin Board, grant, staffing, and referendum. Almost in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Got that clear?
Yep.
Okay. All right, elementary report.
Yeah, nothing, July is normally when I don't work, but.
Okay, well, you don't work, but thank you for taking, checking into that. I think sometimes we get too many people, so.
So, yeah, I sent him a text, I'll talk with him tomorrow. I'm going voting tomorrow, but I will make sure. But I did already post that it should happen because students have paid for that. So I don't see what the difference between closing at eight versus closing at nine thirty.
Right, yeah.
Especially because it is supervised. I mean, we have adults in with them, training them during that timeframe. So I don't think it'll be a problem. It's probably just that Tom didn't take that into consideration. I looked, I did look back, it was until July thirty-first, so it will be next week plus the following week, so it'll be six more times.
Yeah. In my conversation with Tom today, we talked about the normal after-school time because during the school time, we have people here, there's people working, and we'll know if people are in the gym and if we can shoot them off of that, right? It's more, it's more about that, that community time after school where people come in and then, you know, there's, there's nobody here, and all of a sudden, they don't, so they do something outside of faith to, to done lifting or the fine job or something of that nature.
Otherwise, we got one, four more days of summer school, and we've had a lot of high school kids complete Odyssey wear and earn credit back, which has been great. We've had some that have chosen not to continue, but I think this is probably the most, if I look back, that have completed Odyssey wear, which is great. And just want to say I love her, so we're going to keep her.
Okay.
So don't scare her away.
When you find out from Tom, can you let?
Steven?
Yeah, they are letting her know. So just so that he can let his coaches just update them on what's going on so that they. Okay, thank you. Amen. All right. April.
Hello.
Hello, welcome to your first official meeting.
Thank you. I, I took up enough space for Mary and I both, so she didn't have anything. And you stole my thunder about summer school, but that's okay. Yeah, so introduced myself to some students, that was fun to get to, to meet some kids. Yeah, we have four students that have made up all of their classes so far. There are three that aren't attending but are making up their classes on Odyssey wear, and so all is running there. Okay, the student and parent handbook revisions. On page twenty-four, I'm just asking that we remove fines for overdue library materials for all secondary students. We update the, update it also to require background checks for anyone working with children that isn't in there currently. And then on page twenty-seven, update the cell phone policy, remove the ability to have phones during, during their lunch break and in between classes. We also remove a sentence regarding sixth grade as they will be included with the middle school. That's off the recommendation of Mr. Larson before he left and the work that was continued with the community discussions and with the staff. So I just picked that up. And then on page twenty-eight, we'll take some time to look through this, but basically remove the old policy and then update it with the new student electronic device violation procedures. Would you like me to run through that?
You guys all got to see that. My, my one question there, April, was that means they can't wear their smartwatches during the day, am I right?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be anything that they can use as a personal communication device.
And we already had last year with, with smartwatches, a kid trying to take a video of somebody else and then that to friends and stuff.
I know it's harder than me because I can look at the time.
Gets you pretty sad.
I guess, okay. That, that was just one thing that I just wanted to clarify. Okay, go ahead, April.
Well, I think just, are there any questions about that page before I move on? It's kind of lengthy.
Scroll up, Dennis, a little bit. Scroll up, yeah, back to the top, yeah. Oh, keep the one up a little bit, all the way up, right there. Why, why would we remove the overdue fines, the fines for overdue just for secondary?
We don't charge them right now for elementary. We don't mean, we don't, we don't actually charge them, we just want the book back.
But what, but like for secondary, you just don't?
We currently don't charge them, so it was in there, but we weren't doing it in practice.
Okay. It also sometimes creates an equity issue, so if people can't check out their books because they owe thirty cents or whatever it is, that's the other reason that most schools don't do it. However, they do charge for like lost or damaged materials, those things, but a daily overdue fine.
And then also the electronic communication devices. Is that also going for staffing and also, like we talked about the last board meeting? That will be part of it if the kids can't have it, neither should faculty?
So I think just, I, we're talking to, this is just reviewing the student handbook. I think it's definitely something that we should address when we review the staff handbook.
Because that was, when we talked the last meeting, that was definitely a part of it where if we're going to require the kids to not have the stuff, neither will faculty because that's fair. And then they, they have to go to, to either you or Mary for permission, like for, hey, I have, this person's going to be calling me at this time, okay, yeah, here's your exemption, right? This is those exemptions, but to have them, I, I don't think that's right. If we're not going to allow the kids to have them, I don't think faculty should have them because they're going to, you're going to run into the same situation, right? You're going to have a teacher sitting there. Oh, my kids are taking a test. Scroll on their phones, right? And that's not, not why they're here.
And, and that's, so next month is when we anticipate the, the personal handbook to come and the updates to that, and right now, Rachel and I have met with Mary, and Mary has been going through the, the example handbooks to kind of turn it from a procedural manner, a manual into an HR type of style handbook, which is kind of what it should be based on the templates that come out of our professional organizations. I agree with you in, in part saying that, you know, should those devices not be present while a teacher's in the presence of children? Absolutely, hundred percent agree because to me, that, that suggests that the teacher is disengaged from the classroom, right? However, if they're on their prep or their thirty-minute duty for lunch, they are a professional, they have gone to college, they have graduated, they are not a teenage kid, so I would have some, I would suggest, and we'll look at a, at a policy, what it says in our handbook, but during their duty-free lunch, if they want to make a phone call, they want to scroll Facebook, that's their prerogative because that's thirty minutes, that's theirs. On a prep period, they should be prepping, right? But maybe we have something like that where it says in the presence of students or something.
Dan messaged that staff currently needs it to log into almost all of our district. So for the multi-factor identification, so if we don't have our phones, we can't get into our computers and get into the programs that we.
But for me, for all of my financial stuff, like if I want to get logged into the bank, right, I have to send a text to my home and it kind of verifies.
I, I just think there should be something because I can see it already, you know, where you're going to have the issue, you're going to have a teacher sitting there. Here it is, and I just don't, I don't think that's right. You know, because I mean, we have kids that are here that are seventeen, eighteen-year-olds or legally an adult, you know? They, they could be on their phones, but we're taking away from them, and I agree with that. We should take it away from the kids because there is a way better learning, but I think there definitely needs to be something in the, in the personal handbook also for faculty, for sure.
We'll make a file material to do that.
Yeah, I, I think we have to do something, but I don't know if taking their old phones away, if they needed to get into their computers and they, you know, but, right, if they're sitting there scrolling on their phone when they're students, I have an issue with that, but if they're doing it during their free time.
So you guys can't log into your, into your, your books without your phone?
Correct.
Really?
So when I, when I get here in the morning, I have to, I have to have my phone, even my smartwatch, because it pulls up a number. I can't enter the number into my smartwatch. I have to have my phone and enter the number to get into my computer. And then when I go into Skyward, I need it again. When I go into Best, which is our social emotional learning, I need it again. If Google resets, I need it again. I probably put in a code from my phone, which is, we all had to get this like multi-factor identification app. I probably put in three or four times a day, depending on what I'm doing, and I'm not using a lot of the programs that they're using. That's good to know. Plus, we, you know, we use Remind to communicate with parents, and parents will text teachers, you know, I'm going to be late. They try to call the office, they don't always call the office because they know that they can text a teacher. So there's a lot more that teachers do on their phones. But I agree, like they shouldn't be, nobody should be just, you know, playing Monopoly Go or.
So it'll be Facebook. Do teachers, are they required to have their computers on all day?
They're not required to, but.
Because what I'm saying, if a, if a, if a parent is texting somebody to say, my child's going to be late, if you're not looking at your computer.
Well, that's why we, most teachers have gone to Remind because parents would send an email, and the first time a teacher got a chance to sit down to check their email was after the buses left.
Right.
Right, like if they checked it at lunch or they checked it in their prep time and their prep was at ten o'clock in the morning, they didn't sit down again until after school.
Right.
And the parent sent a grandma's supposed to be picking up or whatever, and they sent the kid on the bus, right, like.
So what does Remind do?
We've tried to, but. We don't always.
You get, say, text, send this message to all of them.
Like Remind is an app that I can use to text a parent. Like I can send a message and it sends it to Matt's cell phone as a text.
Oh, okay.
They don't get the number, but that he doesn't have my personal cell phone. Matt has my personal cell phone, but, but a typical parent wouldn't get my personal cell phone. It resides in the app. And our teachers, in Little People Land, we take a lot of pictures and send it through Remind of what things are happening throughout the day and cool things that are happening in classrooms.
Just to note that we will, for, for next month's handbook, we will talk amongst our M and team and have recommendations for the board next month as it relates to teach yourself reviews during the day. Should I say staff?
All right. Any more questions for April before she moves out? Okay, go ahead, April.
Okay, page thirty-two, we're just issuing agenda books to elementary, middle school students, and high school are going to pick them up in the office if they so choose. Update for parent-teacher conference dates. Also made a change to open campus that students will sign in and out with the office before leaving and upon entering, so we can keep track of who's where. Honors E L T, this is a note that I had left from Mr. Larson to update that it requires a three-point-five GPA. So I want to make sure that got in there. And then also just the removal of cell phones being used for academic purposes in order to streamline it, make sure that we don't have that gray area in there. And then I think I added, oh, yes. Yep, and then just on page fifty-two, we're going to run a safety, do a safety check at eight-thirty, nine o'clock or so, and so we're asking them, parents, call the office to report their students tardy or absent by that time. Otherwise, we'll be reaching out if we don't get that information from them to check on their whereabouts. So that is also an intent. So any question?
I was just going to say, this will come back in open session for official one approval, but because it's mostly reviews of handbooks with some fresh eyes, which is always good, you have a fresh look on something. These are the updates and the changes that we're recommending. And again, this will be the open session for official.
Any other questions?
This is where, and maybe my brain's at baby this morning, this afternoon, I mean, whatever it is. So this is where, when you're saying if a teacher tells a, if a teacher contacts a, So this is where, when you're saying if a teacher tells a, if a teacher contacts a, if a parent contacts a teacher that their child's going to be late, it's not going to the office.
I think it should go to the office.
Well, I, I do too. That's where.
Yep. So.
In secondary.
Secondary, I don't.
In little people land, if a teacher, if a parent sends a remind, the teacher sends an email to Carla and Vicky and me saying, um, Brynlee's gonna be coming in after a dentist appointment today. Sometimes Carla and Vicky are like, oh, well, yep, Matt already called the office. And sometimes Carla and Vicky are like, oh, okay. And they put a note in that says, you know, doctor, dentist appointment in at, and then they put the time in when she comes in. Um, but all of our little people teachers then also remind parents that they should be letting the office know.
Okay.
So every time they get something, they say, thank you. Please make sure you let the office know, but they also close the loop on that because they have received information that they don't know has made it to the office.
And secondary is just such a different.
Yeah.
Middle school, high school, parents communicate differently than elementary parents do.
I know.
So the teacher at the elementary level is way more, based on my observation, in multiple districts, is way more involved with parent communication than high school teachers.
Do we still have the attendance line?
Do you have an attendance line?
Okay.
Six seven seven forty-seven all one.
I don't know what it is, but. Okay, all right. My mind's just wrapped around, sorry. Okay, I'll stop asking questions. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, I sat down with uh, Steve and we went over the athletic code handbook. And here are the revisions that we um, we made. Uh, page five, updates to practice attendance. The language will read attending practices is a requirement. All athletes are expected to attend practice if he or she was in attendance during, in attendance during the school day. If an athlete will be missing practice after attending the school day, they must provide a written excuse to the office prior to the absence. It takes away the coach's discretion on that to make it uh, the same for all athletics. And then um, failure to attend one or more unexcused practice may result in suspension from contests. Habitual absence may result dismissal from the team. Any questions about that one? Uh, then page seven, um, the addition of any athlete engaging in, this will be number four on there after the, the list there. So adding to the violations, um, any athlete engaging in unbecoming behavior may be suspended from one or more contests. And then I just moved that paragraph that pertains to that from, I think it was page eight over there. So that's just uh, just a revision of that will be over. And then an update to the consequences. First offense, two contests or twenty percent, which is ever, which, whichever is greater. Second offense, three or thirty percent, whichever is greater. And then removing the homecoming court penalty from the athletic handbook and have that all fall under the student handbook guidelines because that goes over the behavior and um, seemed to, to match. We just left it out of the athletic. And then removal of number three and place above in the offenses. And then page nine, section, move the section to page seven and delete on the page, so. Any questions about that? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for very consent. I'll try not to ask any questions next time, but.
Questions are all right.
What?
Questions are all right.
I know, but. All right, consented agenda. Contracts, new staff, extra.
So contracts, um, the assistant ID that was new last year, of course, that was omitted from the list of coaches and, and other advisors that we presented last month. So that's coming under the uh, consent agenda to uh, today. Transportation supervisor, uh, Todd Beckman had resigned. We went through an interview process and we're recommending um, one of our bus drivers, uh, Krista Busky as the new transportation supervisor. She's been with us eight years. Um, through the interview process, I think uh, one thing that we still have is, is we asked obviously the same questions to everybody in, um, four interviews that we conducted. And there was one question we said, well, you know, what, how, when you're on the phone and the parent's mad that a student wasn't picked up or wasn't dropped off, or was dropped off late, or the bus is going too fast, how are you going to react? And the response was, well, I have to remind myself that they're angry at the uniform of the position. They're not angry at me. And I'm like, that's how I keep my cool. That's how I don't get emotional because I know they're just upset about the situation. We're like, that's the demeanor that, that we're looking for in that position because, I mean, you're talking bus, bus transportation. If a kid doesn't get dropped off, the parents get a little excited, right? Like, where's my kiddo? You lost my kid. Well, they might be sleeping on the bus or maybe they're at school and, and they missed the bus. We weren't able to get a hold of you. Um, sometimes we're more frantic when the, especially in elementary land, last year we had the parent pick up a student that we didn't know about. All of a sudden they're on the bus, we're like, what happened to this kiddo? And then finally we got a hold of mom like twenty minutes later. She's, oh yeah, I got her. You gotta let the teacher know. Um, so transportation is, is one of those things and I, that was a, that was a point that, that stuck out in the interview, uh, in the, in the, in the, the right uh, personality for that position. Has been with us for, like I said, about eight years, um, knows the busing, knows the, the bus garage. Obviously, there's gonna be a train up because now when you're in that leadership role, um, Todd Outgoing is also uh, very cognizant of where he, he's there. People are probably still gonna ask him questions. And as well as since where he's even said to me, you know, I have to take a week off and, and just make it so that people have to go to the new supervisor, whoever that might be. I will do that because then people have to remind themselves there's a new person in charge. So um, we're recommending uh, Krista Nance Stein. Uh, she came in today and, and worked through the payroll, uh, paperwork for payroll and stuff. Um, but I think it's gonna be.
What was it you asked?
Busky.
Okay.
She's staying on to be a driver also.
She's staying on to be a driver and also be the transportation supervisor. Um, so you probably, I mean, if, if the name doesn't ring a bell, I'm sure you've seen her. She's uh, um, heavily involved with regions here with, you know, all the uh, veterans, day assemblies and those stuff.
Oh, okay.
When, when she comes to add you, you will probably.
Okay.
Um, we have a couple of resignations. We have our business teacher. Um, this came about this week. Moving on to a, a different district, um, back up north, um, talking with some other staff. We believe that there might be a significant other that's involved that might be closer to. I don't know that. That's, that wasn't in the letter. We're talking with some other staff that had good relationships with uh, that have my future. Um, uh, I think that might be the case. Regardless, we have a resignation letter. We've asked to prove, uh, we have already posted the position. Um, I have one email of interest uh, already, um, but no applicants for the position. So um, pending the, the timing of this, uh, I, when I was calling around for the biology position, there was a, a former principal, um, that's certified in science, said, well, looks like you're in transition. He went, no, I, I don't wanna, wanna come teach. Um, but had some good suggestions about potentially reaching out to technical schools that might have adjunct instructor that doesn't know them, but is certified teachers. They may not be on the weekend looking for that, but they might be interested in the full time job. Um, otherwise, we would, we would go back to our initial plan last year, potentially, where we'd have, you know, your book covered by somebody, a class covered here, you know, I, the plan was to have me teach some of those personal finance that might still be there. We'd engage in Herbie networks and our RBA networks to see if that would be an option if that position um, goes on film. But to be determined. We posted it, we'll see. We also have a substitute bus driver. Um, used to be a full-time bus driver, went to part-time and, and just sub this last couple of years. And finally says, you know what? I just want to be retired. So it, it shouldn't affect our routes. We still have all the regular uh, bus drivers. But our substitute bus driver said, I'd really like to be retired at this point. Um, and then we have a, a FFA donation, um, that has come in. Um, and this is again, the, the Rochelt, uh, Rochel Carshow from Seneca, um, donated three thousand dollars again to the Rochel FFA. So uh, kudos to them and we thank them for the support and we'll send that letter out. And because of that amount, that's what we have for officially approving this part of the consent agenda. And I'm remiss if I don't include the meeting minutes from a regular boarding unit special, so those are also there. Hopefully you get a chance to review those.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda or do you have any questions regarding consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Matt, is there a second? I have a second. All right. A motion was made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. All right, approval of bills with financial statements. Dennis, did you get any phone calls besides?
Just one. In uh, check uh, two eight eight, three two five, I believe it was. Um, there was a question about FFA t-shirts and I did call uh, Mrs. Lampy, uh, Ms. Lampy about those shirts and uh, because it was, it was like seventy-five shirts for FFA for the car show.
Yeah.
We're like, that seems like an awful lot. That was a question, right? So um, I talked to Rachel, we checked in the invoices, didn't really give us more detail. Um, it is a student activity account. So again, from student activities, students raise the money. The students then vote on how they want to spend the money. They voted to spend the money on these t-shirts. But what it is, is they have, every year they have an FFA t-shirt and then as students volunteer for different events throughout the year, they get their t-shirt. And that becomes like the work attire, the uniform for the year. Um, and, and every year is a different slogan and there's a different, you know, design for the t-shirt. And what they do at the beginning of the year, right around car show time, is they buy enough for the whole year. So about seventy-five, their anticipated enrollment in FFA. Um, she did say that they had forty volunteers for the car show from FFA. So forty of those t-shirts have now been issued to kids, which means there's thirty-five for kids that haven't participated yet, but maybe the next opportunity, they volunteer and they'll get their shirt as they go through the year. So that's what it's for. It does come on a student activities and that makes a lot more sense to me that she buys it for the whole year.
Well, and I saw just car show, so my first thought went to the Iowa car show. And I'm like, why are we printing shirts for them? And it didn't say FFA, it just said car show. So I'm like.
Well, then I thought, are they buying it with that number? Are they buying shirts to then sell them as like a?
Oh, I, I didn't think, I just didn't know.
That's, I, I, I need to clarify this, right?
But that's fine. I just.
But that's what was, and that's the, the reason for the quantity.
Do I have a motion? Anybody have any other concerns? No? Okay. So then I need a motion to approve the bills with financial statements.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay, uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve the bills with financial statements. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried. Old business, none. New business, academic standards, standards for Rochel record.
So every year in July, the school board has to um, officially adopt academic standards for the school year. Um, every district I've ever worked for has, has uh, accepted or adopted the Wisconsin model academic standards. Um, otherwise, if we don't accept those, that means that our administrative team has to develop our own standards for every subject area. And that's work that doesn't happen for two, um, and the standards are already out there. Uh, when you, so I, initially, the, the link goes to DPI, the first link, um, would send you to DPI, which explains all the academic standards and kind of the process behind the, the way the DPI reviews and updates and comes about for the standards. And then the link for the Rochel record, because we also have to put this, this uh, on a annual basis. This has the active links for each individual. So you have the English language charts, you have the mathematics link, you have science link. And those are all linked to the standards that the state puts out. Now, when you have, let's say you have a science uh, standards, is any one class gonna cover all the standards? No. Uh, is a science program in a small school gonna cover all? Probably not. But we're gonna make sure that we identify the ones that are uh, the most important. We have what we call power standards or essential questions where we kind of combine some standards and the more um, usable standards. Instead of having a hundred and forty-one pages of science and say, oh yeah, we're gonna cover that, then probably not. But we, we break those standards down and make it usable for our kids. Um, so any other questions? But uh, this has been pretty standard for every district I've been a part of that adopts the DPI, Wisconsin State Standards as the standards for the next year.
Do I have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six academic standards as presented? I'll make a motion. Do I have a second? Sorry. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six academic standards as presented. Always in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. All right, discussion and possible decision on bus driver guidelines.
So again, every year we take a look at during the summer uh, about the bus driver guidelines. These guidelines are um, identical to last year's except for two things. One is that following three percent increase that we had for all staff this year, those uh, totals have been updated. Um, you can see it's representing a three percent increase over last year. And then we also clarified throughout this agreement, um, it used to say I don't know, a hundred and eighty days or whatever it was, or maybe it was, I think back, it was a hundred and seventy-five student days plus one day of in-service, which was one seventy-six. But we never updated the student contact days, so it still said one seventy-five. So if you remember with last year's calendar, um, we did this, prior to last year, we did a, a, a staff survey and the teachers came through and said, we really need more time. So we extended our school day by nine minutes, I think it was. And then we shortened the school year by three days, going from one seventy-five to one hundred and seventy-two contact days. Well, what that did is inadvertently for our bus drivers, our, our food service workers, our instructional aides, uh, assistants in the classroom, it basically cut their wages by three days and that wasn't the intention. So then we came up with teacher-specific in-service days and then all staff in-service days. So we clarified the language in this bus driver's contract to say a hundred and seventy-two student contact days plus the four in-service days, which is three throughout the course of the year and then a one at the beginning of school year, the back to school. So that has been updated throughout the uh, the document when it's referred to the number of days uh, associated with the working, you know, the normal working year. So those are the changes. Any questions? I would recommend approving the uh, bus driver guidelines.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, so can I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Chris, and is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Angela, thank you. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the bus driver guidelines as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Discussion and possible decisions on compliance officer policies.
I did not uh, put this in for a first read or a second read because all of these policies uh, refer to our compliance officers. So I'm simply changing out Shane Larson and putting in April Stiles as our compliance officer for the nondiscrimination, for harassment, for Title IX, for all those different things. Uh, I did reach out to WSB because I did have a minor concern. Um, last year, it, it seemed to work pretty nice because we had Shane as a male and Mary as a female as our two compliance officers. And I said, and I, I asked the question, I go, should the school board be concerned about having gender specific roles? Or is it more about principal role and then superintendent to have that, that step of the chain of command? And the response was, don't worry about the gender roles because as long as you've got two people, if they don't, if people are uncomfortable with one, they have another one to go to. And then there's still that hierarchy to go from a principal level investigation to then a superintendent level investigation if need be. Um, so that's what we've done here. We've basically, again, swapped out Shane and put April in with uh, contact information. Um, and that's why there's not a first read and a second read. I would just ask the board to approve that minor change. Um, and then we'll get these on our on our, our board docs on our website.
Do you, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion is made and seconded to approve the compliance officer policies as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, parent student handbook revision.
Again, as Mrs. Stiles uh, presented earlier, we have some changes from a fresh look, uh, with one review that we can, otherwise it's the motion to approve.
Anybody have any more questions for Mrs. Stiles? Okay. I need a motion to approve the parent student handbook revision.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and I'll second it. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the parent student handbook revision. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you, April, for your work on that. Discussion and, athletic code revision.
Hello? I'll make a motion.
Oh. Next motion? Okay.
I'll second.
Angela's second there. Okay, all those in favor to approve the athletic code handbook revisions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All abstained? Motion is carried. All right. We're gonna move on. Okay, now we're going to opening roll.
Correct. I had an app that's moved out, so a little moment.
Yeah.
Um, we have three students out, um. And two students, and two students that are coming from Sacred Heart. There's, their other siblings are already here, so the family feels that it's good just to have them all in this place. I failed to review the outs. Trish, can you remind me, I believe this is the family that's...
They are building a house.
They're staying here at their cottage.
They have a cottage in Lake Helen and they're building a house in Wasa. So they're living in the district while they're building their house, but they see no point in enrolling anywhere other than where they're going to be living.
So temporary housing, but it is their main address now. They do live there. They don't have a house other than this cottage or cabin. And they're building, it was a less standard.
Was, yeah.
Rib off, rib off. Thank you. So those are the, and it's obviously outside the normal window for open enrollment, which is, that's why it's coming forward on an individual basis. But recommendations to approve all five, three outs and two ins.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Chris, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Angela. Okay, a motion has been made in second to approve the open enrollment applications as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. All right, board vacancy interviews.
So I have them scheduled at seven, seven-twenty and seven-forty. Seven-forty was an individual that requested to go last because their appointment was pushed in the evening. So we've accounted for that. We have, our first interview is at seven. That is Mr. James Babrowski. He is in the room. We can start early if the board's ready. Mr. Babrowski's ready. Congrats.
Does anybody need to take a restroom break?
Unless somebody wants to have a quick recess and then...
Well, that's great, that's James if he takes a rest. Do you need a statement?
No, I'm fine. Are we ready?
Yeah, I think...
All right.
Come on up, James.
Jared, you can leave if you want, or if you want to stay, you are welcome. It is open section.
So...
You can if you want to, you don't have to.
The funny, the funny thing about this whole process, I've never been through a board appointment before. So I reached out to WSB and said, how do I inform my board on the correct process? My wife's district has also gone through this process recently. Because everything is an open session, it is plausible to have all candidates in the same room. Initially, I thought, well, that's kind of crazy because if the third candidate hears a really good answer by the first and the second candidate, they could adjust their answers based on the other candidate's information and claim it for their own. So to try to avoid any surprises or any possibility to do that, I was, I sent out the questions last week to every candidate to try to eliminate that because everybody's had the questions ahead of time. So it should be one of those things where people are prepared, what they've prepared, and we can go forward. So if...
If you want to stay, you can. If you feel more comfortable going out, go ahead.
However.
Yeah. People don't want to, they don't say anything because they've got their...
And as we reviewed earlier too, it's interesting because the, the questions or interviews per se, the conversation, plus any discussion with the board, plus the vote should be done in an open session unless there's some extraordinary circumstances, which we don't have. The board, the board is allowed, so if you remember our board officer election, that's the only time we can use a secret ballot. We can use a ballot in this situation as long as the board member puts their name on it because then they're held to their vote. And so that would become public record that. Otherwise, we could, you know, after the board discusses the candidates, you can have a show of hands. You could say, okay, how many people are in favor of candidate one, candidate two, candidate three? Or we could pass it out and as long as we put our name on the ballot and circle the individual that you think is best suited to fill the board seat, and then we would just bring them in and pile them. So however the board decides to do it after discussion, and at this point, we're going to...
I'm good. I should have brought my sunglasses.
Do we put back or forward to get that sun out of you?
Yeah, you don't want to pull the shade the other way, right?
Or maybe move closer to the TV.
Yeah. Break my eyes?
I think it's that one, that one that's open.
It's not that one.
It's that one.
It's got to be this one.
That one's closed though. No, it's not.
That's better, oh, that's a lot better.
That's, that's good.
We just want to blind you all.
Push it up or move it back, whatever we need to do to get out of that sun spot. Sorry about that. Moving into the spotlight.
You have the big spot, right? Okay. All right, welcome.
Hey.
Thank you for applying for this vacancy.
You're welcome.
And we'll go, you'll go right down the line. I'll take the first one and we'll go and then we'll go from there. Okay. All right, why, why are you interested in becoming a board member and what are your qualifications?
Interested in becoming a board member, possibly, because I have four daughters in this school. Got a lot of skin in the game. I want to make sure they get a good, solid education. I want to make sure that a woke culture ain't pushed down their throat by curriculum that gets slipped in sometimes. I want to make sure that everything is going in this school as it should be. I guess mainly it's, it's because of my daughters that I want...
What are your qualifications for this?
None, no.
Yeah, for that, okay.
No. So qualifications, I guess I was a board member for three years. And just recently, obviously, I stepped out and did not run for that because of some things that were going on in my personal life and didn't feel like I should be making decisions when my head wasn't in the game like it should have been. But now things are better. Got things, well, you know, things went the way they did, but at least I'm thinking clear than what I was before.
What are the roles and responsibilities of a school board member in here?
We are the governing body of the school district. We act as a liaison between the community, the school board. We oversee what the superintendent in his day-to-day decisions. We don't make the day-to-day decisions. We count on our superintendent and administration to take care of that. And we make sure that's all going good. And we are the representatives of the community who voted us in. Well, not in this case, wouldn't be. But we represent them and we represent their minds and what they're thinking. And try to act on their behalf for the best interest of everybody. Now, you're not always going to please everybody. I think everybody in this board knows that. I mean, with, you might, not yet, but you will. Any decision you make is going to affect people and they're going to, some people are going to take it the wrong way. You got to get pretty thick skin sometimes because you're going to lose a few friends here and there, get unfriended on Facebook pretty quick and things like that. But, but all in all, you do it for the benefit of the community. And you have to make tough decisions, even like this decision to replace this board member. I mean, there might be a better person, candidate out there qualified than me. And even though we all know each other, you guys as a school board have to make a decision that if there's a better person, that best person has to be put in this, in this seat, you know, regardless of who it is. Because that is the benefit of everybody for the, for the school and the community at large. So, so yeah.
Hello, James.
Hello, Chris.
What do you see the most pressing issue concerning our school district?
Oh, budget shortfalls, referendum. Without that, and that's going to get rough. Double the size of the classrooms. We're going to have to cut a lot of teachers. That is the absolute biggest. That is the big thing. That is the elephant in the room. It's going to be a tough thing to get across to the community members. That was actually kind of a big thing. I was thinking about, well, do you want to try to, you know, get back into this? And I was like, that was the one hesitation was like, that is going to be the tough sell. That is going to be a tough sell, especially for the way the woke came in last time. So that's going to be the work cut out for everybody in this room and Dennis and us is to sell that. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I went from a dual income, now I'm a single income and my taxes stayed the same and everything. So even for me, it's a, it's a tough thing to chew on that my taxes are going to go up. But yet, you know, what's it for? It's for the benefit of my kids. And so I can't afford to do it, but you can't afford not to do it. And I think that's what needs to be directed to the community. And even those who don't have kids in this school, I mean, it needs to be presented to them that these are the future. I mean, if we don't have a good education for our kids, if they are double the classroom, don't get the attention they need, some kids are just going to slip on by and they're not going to come out of here with a good education like Roshel has been providing, so.
How would you respond to a community member who contacts you with a school-related complaint?
Tell them to go fly, no, actually. Well, first of all, you ask them if they have followed the chain of command. If they have, one, reached out, two, if, whatever it's depending about. If it's about a teacher, have they talked to the teacher first? Have they talked to the coach first? So you start with that individual. And then it goes on down the line. If they talk to the coach or the teacher, then it goes down to the administration, the principal. And after you talk to the principal, then it goes to the superintendent. And after you talk to the superintendent, then it would finally come to the school board to be dealt with and everything. So that's how you would talk to a citizen or whoever who has a complaint, ask them if they follow the chain of command. And then you also sympathize with them, but don't, you don't take any sides. You try to play neutral. And then you lend your ears, a listening ear, but don't, don't get to the point where I agree with you and, you know, grab our torches and pitchforks and let's go take care of this problem. You don't, you don't do that. You just let them know that they're being heard and address it. The board is always, I mean, anytime we got a complaint, you always, board is always, board is always taking the complaint seriously. So that's how I would handle that.
Okay. And James, why do you feel the, what do you feel the community wishes for, for the future of our schools?
I think it's kind of to maintain the status quo of a, of a school that's, I mean, obviously, we like to have more students here, but smaller nature that we get a good, solid moral education, a good education here because we're not seven hundred kids per class, you know, our teachers are able to give the attention they need to serve students. And because of that size, you know, we wish kids, more kids would play sports, but you can play sports here if you want to, or you're not going to, you're not going to get that anywhere else. Out of a lot bigger schools, but the future of this school, I mean, I, I think, I think, I think people want to see it the way they saw it, like when they went here, that it was a good school. And I hear people say, I want to send my kids there because I went there and I, I came out, I came out well from that school. So I want to do the same for my, my kids as well or my grandkids or me. But, you know, obviously, we all know some of the complaints that we wish the sports were better, but I think they're getting there. But we need the numbers and we need that encouragement. We need that, that spark to get things back going. Because everybody knows, once you have something good, people have to cling on to that. Let's, let's, let's go with that, you know? I think that's what the community sees for the future of this, you know? To get, to get a few things back, like maybe a little better in sports like we were in the past. And, but also to maintain that quality education like Roshel has always given, that smaller, that smaller classroom, that tension.
How will you communicate with other board members outside of board meetings and also with the superintendent?
As far as communication goes, I mean, like for example, when you see another board member, you try not to discuss any logistics or anything in depth that you've talked about or needs to be kept in the privacy of a board meeting outside in public. You try to communicate with them just about normal life, not really dealing with what goes on inside of a board meeting because that's private. If it's going to be open, well, that needs to be discussed. But you, you don't want to get yourself involved in trying to make decisions outside of a board or trying to get another person to think the way you do about it so you can get a certain policy yourself done. That, that's just not good. I would say you, you keep your agenda, you keep your, your thoughts about that kind of stuff to yourself if you're going to see that person in public in press communication. I mean, you've got to talk to somebody about something, give them a call or whatever and just say, hey, look, I, you know, I think if we need to talk about this, but not at an in-depth level that it would, it's going to get you in trouble and a liability also. So you kind of keep the board policy stuff to a minimum. Nothing that's going to harm you or them.
And with the superintendent?
Oh, superintendent, well, that's wide open.
Okay, wide open.
No. Um, I, it's like with, like with Dennis, it's always, it's nice to have that, that personal conversation with him to bounce things off of him, to say, hey, look, with your experience, what do you think of this? And it's always nice having that relationship with, especially Dennis, he's, he's been around. So he's, he has that to give you the feedback and say, hey, look, I think this is what's going to happen. So with Dennis, I, I think, I think you should, and it's good to discuss things that you're concerned about. So this way, he can bring it to the attention of the president and we can get it on the agenda and everything. I think, I think with Dennis, you, we should discuss things more openly, but in a one-on-one if we have a problem with something or something that a community member has brought to us that we should direct it to the board and everything. I think sometimes when you get a little bit too much individual with board members, that can be taken the wrong way. Where the superintendent has, you know, he has the language not to get himself in trouble as much as a typical board member will. So, so yeah.
All right, does anybody else have any additional or anything? Or James, is there anything else we'd like to say to us?
No, just make the best decision. Don't hurt feelings either way.
All right, well, thank you for coming. We'll let you know.
See you, guys.
All right. It was good to see you.
You too. Miss you guys a little bit.
All right.
And James, just so you're aware, I don't know if you are going to stay around.
No, I'm going to go finish cut my grass, finish packing, get the boat ready, grease the bearings.
Where are you going?
We're going up to Trout Lake. We're on our weekly, annual summer vacation up there with the girls and everything. So I'm like way behind. I didn't know Trout, Boulder Junction, wow, kind of tubing scheme.
Okay, do be in skiing.
Boulder Junction.
What's that? Did you, on Trout Lake?
Anyway, just to let you know, the board's going to do the three interviews today. Discuss and take a vote. And then later on, they will have a conversation about annual meeting dates and days of the week that may or may not match up with a new person if they're here to converse about that. And then we'll also talk about filling the vice president position today as well. And if that's one of the incumbents, you know, let's say, you know, our clerk becomes vice president, then we have the domino effect, we then we got to fill the clerk position.
Sir.
If you're the second candidate, I'm sure we'll assign either one of the board members to reach out.
Let me know, we can figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Do you want somebody else to go or?
I don't, I need to talk to you. I look like him and I didn't have surgery yet.
We went out to Lions Camp today and to look at the different things that are available to people, some staff stuff. And we walked and like, are you, where's your cane? It's like, I don't have the cane anymore, I graduated.
He's about to show.
That's hard to interview, so. It's hard with him. He's probably a little bit silly.
Yeah. Does he know everybody?
Yeah.
I've known everybody at everyone and for two of them, it was pretty much the same.
Yeah, same vehicle.
Yeah.
Good evening, Jed.
How are you?
Pretty good. A little nervous?
No.
Oh, he's not nervous, we're all nervous, but why should we? All right, well, we have some questions and you, you see those ahead of time?
Okay.
So tell us a little bit... Okay. So tell us a little bit about why you're interested in being a board member and what your qualifications are.
So I started attending meetings about three years ago. And when I first started, I didn't know much about the school board. But since then, it's been a learning experience and I think I've learned quite a bit. And I've regularly attended meetings since. And I think sometimes sitting in the audience, I have opinions that I think would help the school in general. But in the audience, you only can comment during certain times. And I think being younger than most of yous.
Who's he employed?
I think that it'll offer a different perspective to the board. And I think that attending meetings show that I'm committed to doing what's best for the school. And I'm able to look at things from two different perspectives fairly and try to figure out what I think will help best for the rest of the students. I'm thinking about like, even if this was an unpaid position, would I still do it? And yes, I would because I think I'm coming here to do what's best for the students, not for track.
What are the roles and responsibilities of a school board member in your?
So I actually think the school board had a less, a lot less power than what people think it does because you don't hire the staff. You hire one employee, the superintendent, and then it's up to the board to trust him to deal with the rest of the staff. I think that the board has to be a voice for all of the students and do what's best or what they think's best for everyone. Not just like the group that's outspoken because the quieter group sometimes needs more of a different voice because they don't have it themselves.
All good. All right. Hello, Jared. What do you see as the most pressing issue concerning our school history?
So back to community conversation, like two and a half years ago. When I went there, it was me and one other student. And we always had like our top concerns. And me and the other student both put down that students should be the number one concern. But some of the other concerns that got way more votes was the gym project, which is finished now. The Leroy Memorial Greenhouse project, which is getting worked on. But I still think the students are the number one concern because without the students, you don't need a building, you don't need a staff. None of the rest matters if you don't have the kids. Other concern, I think, is recruiting a quality staff. And then once you have them, keeping them here. Because there's some turnover that I think we need to do a better job building a good relationship with staff to keep them here and not in other districts. And another concern, I think, is budgeting. The last referendum didn't do too great. But I think that you've gotta look at the school budget and you can't say we're gonna shrink the budget because with more expenses and inflation, it's gonna go up. So it's minimizing by how much it increases.
How would you respond to a community member who contacts you with a school-related complaint?
Well, first, I would listen to them, make sure they felt they were heard. But then depending on what it is, a lot of problems already have a chain of commands. So direct him back to that chain, make sure proper steps were followed. If it's something more like policy, like as a board member, you can recommend policy changes. So I wouldn't tell them, we're gonna change this. It would be, thank you, I'll take a look at it. And then if I think it's a valid concern, bring it up to the board later at an appropriate time. But I would never say we're gonna do this or speak on behalf of the board, just as an individual, thank you for your concern. I appreciate you letting me know.
Okay. What do you feel the community wishes for, for the, for the other school?
Well, I think an easy answer would be to look at the referendum and say, well, the community doesn't want a school. But I don't think that's true. I don't think the community has given up in this school. It's just they want it to go down a little bit of a different path. I think they want a school that sets students up for success in life, whether that's going to college, going into the workforce. This is set them up for general success in life. And I think they want a school that we can be proud of. Because depending where you go, you say you're from Rochelle. Some people say, oh, you're from there and not a good way. But I think the community wants a school that you can say, I'm from Rochelle and people respect it.
How will you communicate with other board members outside of board meetings and also with the superintendent?
Well, I think it is important to have communication with the superintendent because let's say there was a water leak in the district office. You would want to know that, hey, this is a concern, what's going on. Or if like a few years ago, we had a flood incident with smartphones, it got out to the community fast. So I think it's important as a board member to know, people might be contacting me with this concern. That way you know where you're gonna be getting contacted for. However, I think there is laws about open meetings and walking quorums. So if you can't have more than three at a time, and I think it's important that we follow those laws. That way it doesn't look like we're talking about board activity, not at a board meeting. And it'll give a better, uh, better like appearance that we're being transparent with people. But I do think the district issued email is the best way. That way, in case they would give record requests, there's, you can go right to the records and see word for word what was said. And then even with Mr. Kader, if I have a question for him, I show up at his office and ask him it.
Jared, I have a question for you that's not on here. I know that you go to school right, currently, right now in Whitewater, correct? How would that affect if we choose to have you on the board? How does that affect you attending meetings? Because Whitewater is what, two hours away?
My class schedule is built, so we have no classes on Friday. And I front flowed my classes into the first half of the day, so I'm done by noon every day, 18 credits, I'm done by noon. So right now, we're on Thursday meetings, so I could be here by two o'clock on a Thursday, no problem.
Okay. And that was a question?
And if it's Monday, it can be Monday. And I'm done at noon.
At noon every day, okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Or is there anything else you'd like to share with us to help us in making a decision? That maybe wasn't answered in any of this?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Well, you did a fantastic job. Anybody have anything? So as Mr. Kader has probably said, we are going to, we have one more interview to talk through. They were gonna discuss it. And then that'll be an open session and then when we go somewhere, um, and then we'll vote. Go ahead.
Just sometimes you're, you're welcome to stay. If you don't wanna stay, you can go. But then the board will discuss in a session. They'll either do a hand vote or a voice vote, or they can do a ballot vote, but they have to identify their names. So that way the votes recorded to each individual board member, almost like a local vote, it'll be on ballot. And then once that's decided, you inform, obviously, the person. Now, if that person is in the room still, then we would, because we moved the meeting dates and the annual meeting, we ordered. So we talked about that. And then we're also gonna take a look at the board vice president because that's the officer position. So hypothetically speaking, if there's a current officer that goes to vice president, then we have to, domino effect, then we have to fill that position. So however that runs out, that may involve the new person. That'll be the process that's next.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. All right, we just talked to her.
Yep, so.
So we'll see if she's on, possibly, yeah, by Mr. Johnson.
Oh, isn't scheduled for seven.
I did, I, I did try to email her quickly to say, hey, we were able to start a little bit early. So if you're able to come in a little earlier, that'd be wonderful. I have not gotten a response. And again, she's coming from Lions camp, so it's not a long drive, but I don't know what time. So if you wanna take short recess, right now we got about seven on the edge. We can be in at 7:30.
Maybe TJ, just, do you wanna apply?
What? I just came in.
I figured that's why you came. Thank you for supporting your friend. Okay, I, let's just take a break and use bathroom, do whatever.
Can we shut the air conditioning off?
I know. It is chilly. That's why I haven't switched back right here. It's always.
Don't sit on your feet.
I always, when we go on team, we both have sweatshirts on because we're always cold.
You walk outside and fall over.
By the way, Matt, I misspoke. Dan did let me know that they have charged fees for, because you're youngest of all, I just, um, they pay for libraries. So I just want you to know, in full transparency, I'm still.
And there's just hope that they return the book.
We want books in the hands of kids, right? Like, we don't want that to be a barrier.
Yeah.
So.
But if you, if you take away the fine, right, does that stop that kid from necessarily turning that book back yet? Right? I don't know.
No, because even at the end, when they have to pump it through at the end of the year, whenever they still will be charged. They're charging those.
No, but like say, say I'm gonna check the book out. First week is full, right? It needs to be, I need to be returned within a week or two weeks, right? All of a sudden, I'm not getting fined for it, I'm gonna keep it a month.
That's not my. So far, that hasn't. Good kids here, right?
Yep.
There you go. Time ever get back.
The 13-year-old is like. He read it at 7:01.
Oh, okay. Oh, you come to chill off?
Colential.
So qualifications of mine. I've been, I'm a registered nurse. I've been a registered nurse for nineteen years. Eight and a half of those years I spent as a school nurse down in the Milwaukee area. As my time during the school nurse, I was a district nurse. So it was, I was the nurse for the whole school district. My first district that I was at, I was one nurse for thirty five hundred kids and six buildings. It was a big school district. My second school district was a smaller knit community, was the Saint Francis Public School District.
I, I, I was trying to tell them where you were from.
Beautiful Saint Francis, Wisconsin, first suburb south of Milwaukee. It's tiny. It's like, I got about nine thousand people in it, you know, for Milwaukee standards. The school district, K three to twelve plus, we had about a thousand kids. And so in that smaller district, I came on during the pandemic. Was brought on and kind of became part of the administrative leadership team. Was working with our board, working with the superintendent as we were working on that getting back to school bit of, of the pandemic. But after the pandemic was over, they saw the value in having a school nurse on the administrative leadership team. So through my time there, I stayed on that administrative leadership team and worked closely with the superintendent and the director of curriculum instruction, the special ed director. It was a really, it's a great team. It was a multi, multi disciplinary team. All of the principals were on there. It was a great, it was a great team to work on. You know, like everybody, the buildings and grounds, there was the, like, our, the tech guy was on there, the athletic director. And we would all kind of talk about how we were helping to move the district forward and then helping to shape. Like, we were working really hard on our district goals, vision, that kind of stuff to bring to the board, to have the board to approve it. So similar challenges that all school districts are facing, funding, dwindling numbers of kids, those kinds of things. So I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with some of the, some of the challenges to running a school district. Not that I didn't. I, oh, and I, I should prop myself up. I got a, I got an award. I got a, an educator award for the South Shore area. For my work in the Saint Francis School District. I was also the secretary of the Wisconsin Association of School Nurses on their executive board, where I have done a lot of advocacy work for Wisconsin schools, school nurses, students, school districts at the state level. I've talked to a lot of our state representatives, state senators about school funding, Medicaid reimbursement, that kind of stuff, to try to, again, find that funding for, for our public schools. So I have no, I have no qualms about talking to people to, to get, to get what schools need, what our students need to be successful. Yeah.
What are the roles and responsibilities of a school board member?
Really, I see the school board as advocates. You're advocating for the students and you're advocating for the community that we all live in. You're ensuring the accountability to make sure that the resources that we have are used appropriately and wisely. Setting that mission, vision, goals for the district and making sure that you're seeing them achieved by a strategic plan. Overseeing the superintendent, making sure they are helping to move the district in the direction that you'd like them to be in. And then adopting, monitoring budget, making those tough choices when they need to be made.
What do you see as the most pressing issue concerning our school district?
Funding. I know that we did not pass that referendum that was just on the last, the last election, unfortunately. So Rochelle's no just different than most schools that were, that we see, but I did kind of look a little into, well, the twenty twenty three dollars, right? I was looking at the per pu, per pupil revenue was sixteen thousand eight eighty two, a little higher than normal coming from the local taxes versus the state return. And that our state, the state contribution is lower here than in some of the surrounding districts. But, you know, there's, that's a problem everywhere that we're not getting the, you know, the revenue that we need to continue to educate at a high level and have the, you know, robust curriculum and, and arts and sports and all the things that we would like to have for all of our kids. And then also, I, I feel like maybe community apathy outside of people who have the vested interest of their kids being in the district. I feel like there, there's not, there's not the buy-in from the, from the community members who don't necessarily have a student in the district at this time.
How would you respond to a community member who contacts you with a school-related complaint?
The first thing is to not make any promises, to not jump to conclusions. It's really, you know, you then go on, they, you thank them for coming to you with their concern and then kind of go on a fact-finding, fact-finding mission. Everybody's perception of every interaction is different, so it's kind of finding where that truth lies, what their concern is, and then trying to address their concern, you know, really making sure that they feel seen, heard, valued, but then making sure that that isn't going to be something that's going to harm the district in any kind of way. Really not, not jump to the, oh, I'll fix it. Is that, it's not necessarily something that needs to be fixed or, you know, yeah, able to fix, correct?
Okay, what do you feel the community wishes for the future of our school?
For it to continue, not just to continue, but to thrive. Communities really are built around schools. I, you know, we have to make sure that the, remind the community that that's what it is. Community, like, schools bring in families. It's, you know, when schools, when, when, when school districts go away, the community is kind of fizzled and disappear. So I, it's definitely gonna be a needed reminder that, you know, having kids with great opportunities in their school district is gonna help feed and grow our community. And then really need to just create that buy-in, like I, I mentioned before, that make, make the people who don't yet have ki, either don't yet have kids in the school district or who don't have kids in the school district at all, to make them see the value in, in having the school district here.
How will you communicate with other board members outside of board meetings and also with the superintendent?
I am quick to an email. I, I never let an email sit in my inbox for more than twenty four hours. I am one of those people who I, I don't like having the, the, the numbers next to the icon on my phone. So I, I like to, I like to do things as they are coming and at least give somebody feedback that, yes, I ended, I indeed saw your email. I may, I'm working on it or, but just acknowledging that, that I have, that I've seen it and that I'm working on it versus just leaving you unread or, or, or I'm, I, I am a daily email checker. It's never a, it's never more than twenty four hours before I'm getting rid of that little, that little red number next to the icon.
Is there anything else that you would like to share with us?
No, just I, you know, even if I don't get the position, I, I am very impressed with the school district. Coming from the southeastern Wisconsin area where we have very good schools, I didn't know what to expect, but I have been blown away. It's been like gem, gem of a district. We always would, you know, being so close to Smash and like, it, it feels like people forget that Rochelle's here, but Rochelle's amazing and everybody should know about it.
Thank you. All right, you wanna give me a little spiel?
A little spiel is simply that if you're in the district around, so I get one of them to do that. The board is going to deliberate in open session because we have three candidates here with their, by request, doesn't accommodate work schedule. And so they're going to enter into an open session conversation about who they believe to be a fit for a position. They can either do a voice vote, they can do a hand vote, they could do a ballot vote, it cannot be secret ballot because each board number has to be accounted for. So we're gonna go through that process and then depending who they select as the next board member, we also have to talk about annual meeting day because there's conflict. And then we'll also talk about meeting dates in general because we get adjusted to Thursday for a different board member that's no longer on the board. And so the question is, do we want to keep it Thursday or do we want it Tuesday? Or I get, you know, Monday night, like, where, where do we want to go as a board? And then lastly, before we get into closed session, we do have to adjust our officer to elect a new vice president. And if that is a current officer, then domino effect occurs and it could impact the new person and, and becoming a, an officer potentially right out of the gate. I should say, it's something I didn't mention to the other candidates is that this position is really to fill until the next election, which is coming up, obviously, next spring. So if the person wants to continue in this position, they would have to, you know, file the candidacy paperwork and all that good stuff and then be put on the ballot to then be selected. And then that would fill out the remaining term, which would be two additional years. So it's not a new three-year term. It's to complete, the person that was elected to complete their term.
Got it.
So that's our process moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm actually, I think I'm doing this, but we're going for each one. What do you suggest? And you do, we want to talk, and then you do want to pick your number one, number two, number three, and your mind, and then. What do you think? I know.
Give me about one, two, three?
Do you want to, like, in your mind, you want to pick your one, two, and three and then discuss them?
So something we could do is, I mean, to initiate the conversation, we could take the ballot, put our name on it, put your one, two, and three, and then add up the points as far as, you know, if everybody's got the same number one, well, then it's pretty clear what, what people want.
Okay.
Two people have, one person is number one, and two other people have the, that's somebody else's number one. Okay, then that would help guide our discussion.
And I would say, just before we even start, I think I'm very impressed by all three of them. I think we have, we can't go wrong with whoever we choose. Each one of them brings uniqueness to their, to the spot, so.
One, two, and three, I have.
Yep, and that way we can just kind of have an idea.
I guess just to clarify, one is the person that you like.
Correct.
Maybe three was the person because I had most.
Put your name on there, man.
Wait, because that isn't the official ballot.
Oh, okay. And you guys would have to send it down if you want it. No.
Yeah, me too, sure.
He says you should.
Okay.
Guys, guys.
It's a little scary, I see.
Okay. There you go. I'll let you do it, it's me, bro.
Of course, no. Don't wait out.
No, wait. I'm very impressed with all of them. I think they've all had, we all had great qualities, you know, so. Everybody, well, yeah, yeah, but we're all different.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes, you are.
He's implying.
Yeah, right.
I knew what he was saying.
He's making sure we all know that, Carla.
Oh, there's Tom.
Hey, Mr. Eric.
Hey, there's Tom. He read it. He didn't respond to it.
One, two, three.
What are we gonna do? So what I.
There's no clear cut.
There's no clear cut.
There is no clear.
No clear cut, number one. So, um, again, if we, if we have four board members voting, if we had somebody vote for, for one person that was number one, their first choice, that person will have four points. So we have one person with six points, we have two others with nine points.
Well, there's definitely one leader vote.
There's a leader, but it's still very close. I mean, there's not one person that's.
So there's, I mean, I guess the question, the question of the year, does the board want discuss shows, I don't know how you'd like to do that. And then, and then maybe we do have an official ballot where you just vote for one.
And maybe that's what we do now.
And that would be a simple majority.
It was kind of, we just did doing one, two, three. If one would be your vote or not necessarily, if you wanted to discuss first.
Well, well, why we do it, the, the one, two, three, because two people might be close when we discuss those.
Every candidate has a first place vote.
Yeah. So every candidate has a curtain, you know? So it's just a matter of.
Everybody has a first place and a second place.
Yep.
Well, you just want to get the vote for one, see? Open up that?
Yeah. Take a vote. So they're both one, just one.
And take yours back and just write one.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, here you go.
Just give me my.
Yep, I have my.
Yeah, we come up with this thing. I'm not even gonna look.
I think you have.
I know. Matt's probably.
And I'm gonna go back to Bob Butler email. See if it has to be majority or simple multiple, so if it has to be, you know, you have three of the four, so to speak. I don't think it does, but I want to go back.
Open else better resign. Oh, no, this one. It can't see how it is. Mary, did you, while I were working on this, did you find out what, tell me?
Yes, so the program will go on as, as.
Scheduled?
Scheduled.
Okay.
Uh, he also said that it's not necessarily, like, if, if a coach wants to go in at a time and monitor and actively monitor, that that would be open. The problem has been with unmonitored student and community use. He did say that particularly, like, if a practice, like, if a student comes in before the coach comes in, we need to make sure that, that there is no access to the gymnasium. Because, I mean, quite frankly, we're paying a lot of money to get that floor done.
Yeah.
You gotta pay extra.
And if we have to pay extra, I mean, maybe we need to charge the people who stepped on it.
Yeah.
Right?
Example, if football practice is going on and they want to use the weight, that's fine, but it better be monitored by the football coaches.
Okay.
It better be in the weight room, not in the gym.
Yeah.
Okay. And did you let Mr. Schufz know this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I am not going to call Mr. Schufz.
Okay.
Because Mr. Richter has spoken to Mr. Schufz.
Then I won't worry about it.
Unless you tell me to call Mr. Schufz.
No, if he has any questions, I'll have him call you.
He knows my number.
I know he knows your number. Okay.
Okay, um, going back to, uh, WSB's representative, Bob Butler, um, who advises school boards statewide. Uh, it says normally school boards require some majority vote of those present on the board, meaning for motions, uh, at, uh, present at the board meeting for motions carrying. School boards keep in mind, however, that state law and/or other barter policy may include other voting requirements. For example, um, state statutes require a majority vote of the full membership to dismiss a teacher or those types of things. Uh, we do not have in our board policy that we would do anything other than majority vote. So it's my, uh, understanding that majority vote of, of those present here would then result in, in that factor. So, um, at this point in time, I will read, because now we have voted for just one, so I'll read the votes. Uh, we have one vote for James Dombrowski. We have one vote for Jared Miller. We have one vote for Amanda, is it Daly?
Daly.
Daly. And we have a second vote for James Dombrowski. So simple majority, we suggest that James would be the appointee. Two, one, one.
Two, one. All right. Thank you, Amanda, thank you, Jared. Just remember, you can apply to run. Well, you would put your, um.
You gotta apply by.
It's like January fifth or sixth or something like that.
And we need people to join our referendum committee.
Yes.
Love you, Amanda.
But thank you, thank you for taking the interest of coming to apply, I appreciate that. And you guys both did a wonderful job. And it was a close race. Yeah. Thank you, thank you. TJ, you got here a little earlier. No, I'm just kidding. All right. Okay, so. All right. Oh, did you make a motion?
Motion to appoint.
Okay, I, we need a motion to appoint James Dombrowski as a vacancy, okay? Matt's gonna make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Angela? Okay. Okay, motion as the name and second to approve James Dombrowski as filling the vac- vacancy. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carry, James Dombrowski. Okay, now, back to F. Oh, well, no, or do we do the new board? Add back to F. Okay. So we need to decide, do we stay on Thursdays? Or what do we do?
I would prefer to change it back to Mondays.
So, um, it seems like there's so many events on Thursdays. I mean, you have most, there's a bunch of sporting events, stuff like that. Thursday's just a little tougher, I think it's towards the end of the week. You know, I, I think Mondays is a better day.
Now, the.
But that's just.
Chris, what is your opinion?
Um, I'm, I'm good with that too. Like, since Mondays, there's generally not a lot going on.
Usually there's one or two concerts through the year.
The, the caveat is the, is the, um, arts department, you know, vampire concert on Monday, and we've been able to accommodate for those two.
I think there's two, yeah.
There's two usually somewhere, there's, yeah. I didn't look.
I know in the fall, they go third Monday, fourth Monday, so it's difficult. But we've also, uh, adjusted to a Wednesday that one month, if we know that going in.
That's just my, I would argue and, and I would ask for any, any of our staff to, um, say otherwise because it may be on, I'm, this isn't just my perception, but when we have a board meeting on Monday, one negative is that if it gets to be that 11 o'clock hour, then all of us have to go to work the next day, right?
I don't.
Uh, like I said, most of us. You volunteer on Tuesday, I thought.
Wednesdays, she volunteers on Wednesday.
I volunteer so many days in the week, it doesn't matter.
Okay, we're quote-unquote.
I'm just kidding.
So, so that's, that, that's a negative, right? But then I would argue that from, uh, central office or district office, if we have decisions on Monday, that gives us that whole week to follow through on the board's decision as opposed to a Thursday night. And then all of a sudden, we've got Friday, and then we get the weekend. And either we're following up with phone calls or emails in the weekend, or it's Monday and we're like, what did the board say again? Because we have the weekend. So sometimes it's nice to have that, that Monday board meeting and the board makes decisions. And then we can reach out to vendors or to, um, suppliers, uh, you know, during that weekend. It's just, it's part of that work weekend, that is kind of nice. So, um, the original reason that we, uh, revisit this is because I know, um, Angela said that we, she had a conflict with her annual meeting. Now, remember, we moved that from August to September, uh, this year because we don't get a lot of our information or even estimates until later in the, or later in the, the fiscal year. Um, again, October's when we have to approve the levy. So if we did annual meeting in September, then the next month, we're coming back and we have our finalized information after October 15th. The one, the, the date's highlighted right now, um, the annual meeting on Thursday, September 25th is for a conflict. Thursday, October 23rd is actually the fourth Thursday. But remember, we get our information on the 15th. And so for Rachel, the, the, put together everything in one night and have it ready, there's no way that that's feasible. So that's why that's scheduled the fourth week. It's also Dick Pink Night for, um, that Thursday is also Dick Pink for, uh, volleyball and Iowa. Uh, Thursday, January 22nd i- is initially scheduled in the fourth week due to the state convention, because that's always when it's held, but this year they went the, 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 the fourth week. So now the third week will work for us. So I'm like, how did that work? Um, so that's why that one's highlighted. So that's a conflict that we have currently on Thursday nights anyway. So the Monday night would alleviate, uh, both of those conflicts probably.
And then Wednesday was off the table because how?
Wednesday's normally a, a.
Yeah. It's just that particular day, I'm gonna be in Madison, and I could have drove back, I just wanted to be here six. I do have to work. But Mondays, I mean, Mondays, it, I, I have no preference. Mondays are probably easier because then that opens me up on Thursdays to teach at school. Because I knew our classes are Tuesday, Thursdays, so.
Oh.
Currently, my schedule with them is I don't teach Thursday nights, um, but I'm sure they would like me to.
I'm sure.
So.
Well, Chris, do you, I think we went from Wednesday to Monday because didn't we also have a conflict on Wednesday nights?
Yes.
And then George had conflict with CCD.
CCD.
Wednesday's always went tough. Uh, it's always been tough.
But the good thing was, there's usually not sports events either, but CCD records, so we got it.
Mondays, there's less sports, there's just those two months that we know we have concerts. And Monday's not a conflict with the state convention either, because that's normally a Tuesday night through Friday noon.
So are we doing the?
I ought to make it the third Monday of the month.
The third Monday of the month.
Is that, is that the Monday was before?
The Thursday?
Yeah. The same thing.
So. So that would be the 18th. I have to change that. So, and then we would do the 27th for this annual meeting.
Well, the, the annual meeting's separate, so that's, that's.
Well, I know, but you did, if we do the third Monday is the 15th of September, we could do the annual meeting the 22nd, the following week. Okay? And then.
Let's get to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
September. And it leaves.
With your regular meeting.
I don't know, um, Trish, I have to ask, are the concerts added here already?
Um, district, yes. Googled the district calendar.
So you're saying that we could have the annual meeting on the, on Monday, the 22nd?
Yes.
I see what you're saying. Go to the third Monday of the month and then have the, uh, annual meeting on the Monday following.
Yes.
Normal September.
And that's what you did, that's how you originally planned it in September.
You know the other caveat, and I would, I would ask Rachel if it's possible that we get, so if, if we're looking at October, when we get our information finalized from the state on October 15th, we'd have the 16th, 17th, and 20th to get ready for setting the levy. I don't know that that's enough time. So we might, for October's meeting, I wondered what's on the, we might go 27th, just so. And that's the fall band concert. That's the month. So the 20th would be the fall choir concert. So neither one of those days work in October. So the question would be, so, for October specifically, October, make it the 27th?
No, well, the 27th doesn't work or does?
20th is choir, 27th is band.
Did you just do the mix on the 23rd, that Thursday?
Can we just make it on the Thursday?
I'm good with that, it's my birthday, I'd love to spend it.
Oh, well.
Their birthday was 27th, I was 28.
Oh, is it 23rd?
23rd, okay.
When is yours?
27th, I can't hear. No, we, we can leave it on the 23rd, if that works for people for that one month. Because that would be, that's gonna be a week after we get our data. And then that, for that one month, we'll keep it on Thursday because then we have the concert, um, conflicts on the Mondays.
All right, so let's, so then November would be the 17th. Okay? Now tell me, is there a band concert on December 15th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so do we, let me talk about it or say that?
Maybe the 18th.
That's 18th, that's last day of school, it's, huh?
No.
Oh, no, 19th is.
Do we leave it on the 18th then? That means we're gonna have two different days for boarding.
October and December on Thursday, everything else is the, the, uh, Monday.
Yeah, well, I'm looking here to make sure.
Spring. Let's go through it.
December, January 19th then, which would be okay.
Before the state conference.
Yep. And then it would be, yeah, then it would be February 16th. Okay?
16th looks good.
Then it would be, well, it would be March 23rd because spring break is the week before, right?
Correct.
Okay, so then it would be March 23rd. Then April, I'm confused, be, well, it would have to be the 20th.
It would be the 20th, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That looks good, we have track and softball, but.
Okay, and, um, May 18th?
Yep.
Okay, and then June 15th. That's as far as I have. So we have two that are on a Thursday.
October, December would be Thursday. And then March would be the fourth Monday because of spring break.
October, yeah, and.
So it's October 23rd.
And December 18th.
Yeah, and December 18th, 7th.
Yeah, and then everything else is on a Monday.
What was the date of that annual meeting, the 23rd of October?
No, September.
For September.
Uh, the 22nd, um, is the annual meeting. Yeah.
Just like a by now.
Yeah, and the 15th is our regular meeting.
An August meeting will be?
An August meeting will be the 18th.
And I'll print it all up and, uh, pending, obviously, we've had a motion, I don't know if there was a second, to go Mondays and Tuesday.
I don't think we need.
That worked for him before.
It worked for him before, and I know he didn't want to do Thursdays because that's volleyball.
Pending, pending board approval, what I'll do is I'll, I'll recreate that document and share it out with everybody, so.
All right. All right.
So we made a motion?
Well, we haven't made a motion, somebody's gotta make one.
I thought Matthew had the Monday.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, thanks, Angela. Okay. So to approve the 230, you know, 256 meetings as discussed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye. Those opposed, any abstentions, okay? Motion carry. All right. Discussion of possible decision on board vice president. Generally, it's always been whatever person who's ever absent, whoever's position they are feeling, they become that person. Like, when I was nominated, when I was nominated, or I became vice president, even though I had never been a lawyer.
That could be, that, that's news to me. I don't, I don't know that.
So I don't know.
Because you're basically replacing.
We're replacing. So I guess that's.
So unless, unless someone wants it.
Yeah. Unless somebody wants to be vice president.
Wanna be VP?
Oh, we're gonna be sexually.
Angela?
Or corporal. I have no preference, so.
So we have to add a motion here. I don't know if James wants to be vice president, but that's a definite.
He doesn't get that choice.
Yeah.
I will vote to do, uh, make James the new vice president.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Okay, motion has been made as second to approve James Dombrowski as vice president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Now we are going to go to closed session. The board will go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Sections 19.851C, for the purpose of discussing compensation for public employees over which the school board exercises jurisdiction. Do you have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make it.
Angela, okay? I will second it to go into closed session at 3:00. 8:12. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed?